And declare a quorum. And and then public comments? No, no public comment. Um, okay, so we're gonna swear in our new trustees. And I guess so just repeat after me together, okay? Um, so.
All of us or just them?
Yeah.
So it's I state your name.
Andy Sailor.
Do and you can swear affirm or swear by the ever living God. Whichever one you want.
Do affirm.
Okay, that I will faithfully support the Constitution of the United States.
I will faithfully support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
The state of Colorado.
The laws of the state of Colorado.
The laws of the state of Colorado.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Trustees of the Boulder Public Library District.
Will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of the Trustees of the Boulder Public Library District.
Upon which I'm about to enter to the best of my ability.
On what I'm about to enter to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
It sounds serious, but have you guys ever been to the citizenship ceremony?
No.
You have to go sometime. We do it here at the library. We do it twice a year. But you have you ever been to the citizenship ceremony? So this sounds serious, right? Like it, but you you need to go to that one where you have to swear off allegiance to all potentates and all kinds of things.
It's in English.
It's not over through the government.
And and to bear arms for.
All right, so we're gonna consider approval of the middle minutes from April sixteenth, two thousand twenty four. Um, someone make a motion or I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Does anybody have any? Corrections or comments? All right, motions on the table. Someone second?
Second.
Right, all in favor of approving the minutes? You're on there. Randomly approved. Okay, so technology intro and volunteer service portal for new trustees. Amy Schuman.
I'm up first. I should have not had the spicy sauce.
Okay.
When was the spicy sauce?
Was the, yeah. Let me just a second here to share my screen. We also have Sophia Suraj, our volunteer services man.
Okay, I didn't want to script that with a separate.
And it together on.
Okay, they're together, okay. And Sophie Suraj. Hi, Sophia, sorry.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Amy Shum. I'm the IT Director here at the library. And I know many of you, but there are two, one and a half really that I am just meeting tonight. So nice to meet you, Tom. And Andy was very instrumental in helping us with the IT decoupling that we did from the city of Boulder. Last year, I consulted with him a lot. David did too. Uh, he helped out with the RFP process as we were selecting vendors to help us with this decoupling project. And ultimately, we ended up going with Focus Connect and um, they were able to get the job done and they've been supporting us as um, IT management company since then. Uh, we are a small team. There's just right now three of us, myself, Lisa Holmberg and Sean Crowe. Uh, we've been with the library. Oh, boy. Lisa's been with the library for fourteen years. I've been with the library for thirteen years and Sean has been with the library for six years, seven years. So uh, we've been around for a while. Um, I'm in the process of hiring a new applications administrator. The position is getting graded right now with employers council and I hope to post it and fill it before Novo opens. And I think that will be um really good for all of us. Uh, real quickly, I just wanted to go over some of our priorities for this year. We're just about halfway through the year, so we're about halfway through our priorities list here. Uh, the biggest one was the decoupling from the city that began in um, October, November-ish. Um, and the bulk of it was done in January, but as you can imagine, there's still a lot to be done. And so we're still chipping away at the the various hardware and software that we're setting up and um doing a lot of onboarding. I think I counted fifty eight uh, onboarding's that we've done for new staff, trustees and substitutes. And we've also been working hard at helping get Novo, the new Novo setup. So purchasing equipment, uh, purchasing licenses, taking care of the automated materials handling system installation. Um, AV equipment that's gonna go in the space, anything technology related, we've had our hands on over the last many years. And it's come to a head probably the last three months or so for us. I think we're, we have most everything procured. We're just waiting for the green light to get into the building and start setting things up. Uh, we were able to get the network up and running last week, so that's pretty exciting. Um, and then we're, once we get through Novo, we're gonna dive into policies and compliance and that's something that Focus Connect is gonna be assisting us with. So towards the third and fourth quarter of this year, you guys will probably see some IT policies come through here that um, will need to implement as a library district. So we'll be working on that. We're also gonna be doing some um trainings for staff, some security staff. We're gonna be doing some penetration testing. So a lot of fun things are coming on the horizon for our work group. A lot of things that are first time for us. Um, historically, the city has handled all of the policy and compliance. So this is all gonna be new to us and we're super excited and anxious to to learn. And then before we know it, we're gonna be looking at Gun Barrel and figuring out what kind of AMH we need at Gun Barrel and how many PCs we need and all the good stuff that we did here at Maine and the branches in January, what we've done at Novo over the last couple of months, we'll get to do it again with Gun Barrel. So those are kind of our high level priorities. Um we're also still an IT department answering help desk tickets. Uh, to date, we've answered, we've received thirteen hundred tickets and we've answered about ninety one percent of those. And so we're doing a really good job at staying on top of tickets. Uh, we've had a few snafus with technology, as you can imagine, uh, but overall, I think the transition has gone really well. I think my staff is feeling really good. Um, we've recovered from the craziness and we're excited for what the rest of the year has. So it's time, I appreciate it. Um, if you have any issues with IT, you guys know how to find me. Um my office is 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 right on the second floor up here. Uh, you you have my, I can provide my email or Celia can provide my email and phone number. I'm always just an email or a phone call away or a Teams chat away, so.
How's it being a master of your own domain now?
It's exciting. Uh, we still rely on Focus Connect quite a bit, but I hope to wean ourselves off of that um, into twenty twenty five. Um, but it's really exciting to to have an understanding now of what we need to do to be our own entity, um, free from the city. It it's a we have a little bit of freedom on what we can do and there's less, there's more money for one, so thank you. Um, we're actually able to fulfill a lot of um, deferred maintenance, I suppose you could say with IT now that we are fully funded. So all of it is very exciting. Yeah.
I mean, I never did that thing where I was supposed to migrate my emails from I tried and I couldn't figure it out. Is that something where I could contact a member of your team?
Yeah, I'll get Scott. I think you were working with Scotts on that. I'll have Scott.
Be an exaggeration. I think I thought I'd try to do it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good luck with that.
But yeah, this hearing is reminding me that. So sorry for the delay.
That's okay. No worries. We'll get it sorted out. Um.
I got on like a Teams with them and they just did like five with me.
Oh, okay.
They were like, do this now. And we were like, talking while we did it.
Amazing.
Yeah.
It was one of the Focus Connect people, I think.
Yep, I'll I'll just send an email out to the two of you and you can work out a time and it literally will take you five minutes.
Okay, thanks.
I know Jen, she's gone now, but she, I don't, did she ever get her moved over?
Okay.
I don't think so either, but.
Most everybody probably has everything that she had because I think you CC'd everybody.
Yeah, right.
So I'm.
It's fine, yeah.
It's just, we wanna start off um, with emails and documentation within the district and not Google.
So we, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Amy, when, so just yesterday, was it two days ago, whenever I was trying to get on Teams in a meeting with with Dave and Doug, um, I had no audio on Teams or no video, brother. It's that I had no camera.
Okay.
Is there something, like, do I not have a camera if I'm trying to initiate teams?
It all depends on what device you're using.
I was using this.
We can talk during the break. We'll look at your computer and see it could, it could be variety.
Were you?
Okay. Because I yeah, I was just kind of surprised.
Well, that's because I was on my phone.
Oh, guys.
Because and I had it right next to the, this device here. And so it looked like I was using this, but I wasn't.
And you have one of the Dells, right?
Yes.
Okay, so one of the Dells, we've had to send back for warranty because of sound and video issues. Could be that. Uh, but at the break, we'll take a look and see if we can sort it out.
And then when we transition off with like new, with old trustees, you have a whole system or policy for whoever it is that you handle people's old
Yep.
stuff and all.
Yep, so we have an offboarding procedure that we do with staff trustees. Um, and it's up to the supervisor for you guys. I think Celia's handling the onboarding and offboarding of trustees. Um, it's just basically a ticket that goes into our system and we work out all of the either adding or subtracting.
Do you want general questions right now? Do you want no questions? We can move on to Doug. I didn't, if this was just an update or if you want.
Uh, this was mostly just an introduction.
What's the question about?
I was gonna ask, well, now I'm just asking the question. This is pretty much all this. You mentioned the support tickets. Is that pretty much entirely staff or do you guys have like a patron facing support role as well?
It's entirely staff. Uh, we do support patron machines. We just don't do provide tech support for our patrons.
Okay. And then I know we've, part of the transition was we moved off kind of the city running the internet. I mean, although we're still getting the city's internet, have you kind of thought about why, I mean, this might be come from the policy discussion, but it will anything be changing in terms of like network policies and like what you can access and the, I know we have a lot of things we block within the library today for various rules.
We actually don't block a whole lot. Um, the conversation has been coming up quite a bit lately because we've had a lot of patron requests to whitelist specific white page or websites. Usually it's gambling websites. We filter based off categories. Um, so we don't filter that much. Uh, we are required to filter because of CPO laws, Colorado internet protection. Um, so there are things that we absolutely won't let through. Um, but yes, there, we will have more discussions on that as we move forward with our policies.
That's all my questions, Doug. Thank you.
All right, so Sophia.
Hello, um, hi, Tom and hi, Andy. My name's Sophia Suraj. She heard her phone out. Um, I am the manager of the Volunteer Services Department. I work with a kind of small but mighty team. So you might meet my colleague Christine Burke. She's awesome. So if you have a question, she can help you as well. Um, but I just wanted to say hello. Thank you for joining the Board of Trustees and for volunteering your time. You all do so much um, for our library and it's just really exciting to get to to manage and recruit volunteers for an organization where you know, volunteerism is happening at every level of the organization, all the way up to the the Board of Trustees, um, to managing donations, working with patrons, drop in tech, Carnegie Library. Um, so you all, you know, really make that work meaningful for a lot of our volunteers and to get to say that is really exciting. So thank you. Um, I have a business card for my department. I'll pass around so you can all have them. Um, if you ever have questions, we got you all added to Give Pulse, which is um, the group that Celia and I managed to help track all of your hours and projects and contributions that you make as a part of the library and also specifically in the work of trustees.
You give.
If you ever have questions or need help with Give Pulse, please let me know. Hopefully it's pretty smooth. We don't want that to be, you know, a barrier for you. We just want you to get into the action and um, do your amazing work. So just let us know if we can help create a pathway for you to do that. Um, but yeah, I'm excited to have you all on board and thank you for having me. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, that's what, um, emails, right?
Yes, you all should have gotten the notification from Give Pulse to get added into your group. If you haven't, I can help you and resend it.
I need to get.
Fifty six hundred emails in the inbox who just got access.
Think Give Pulse notification and it'll just ask you to verify.
Yeah, um the trustee meetings, like when I went in there the other day, this is maybe a lot, a couple of weeks ago. They only, we only have one for like January. I don't know. Do we need to have them for each, if we need to log our time? Um, or what do you uh like, cause I couldn't create a new entry for a new volunteer activity, I didn't think.
Okay, so it might be the way that that event is listed. It might show January as the first date on that.
Right, okay.
Um, but Celia and I have been working to kind of register folks for the standing meeting.
Okay.
worry about that. And then you can add an impact when you do any work outside of.
Okay, I may have to, oh, I might call you.
Yeah, I'm happy to run through it with you and and for new folks as well. Um, but basically it has the flexibility to automatically track your impacts or hours. Um for the things that you're kind of already accounted for. And then beyond that, if you do, you know, additional work outside of meetings, you can add your own impacts and you reflect on the own way done. So, yeah.
You would like us to log work done outside of these meetings or our system?
Yes.
It would be just so we can keep track of how much time the trustee, I know we I we haven't, I haven't been good at bad in the last, we used to write it down.
Yeah.
But uh now that we have give polls, I I think we just need to start logging so we can kind of keep track of that.
Yes.
Sylvia, do you have any questions or comments? Okay.
Well, thank you. Feel free to let me. I'm happy to walk you through any of those things that can present the issues. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, the next um, item on the agenda is um, designate the Boulder Library Foundation Representative. Sylvia, we designated in the last meeting. I believe, and I, we also put me on there for a month. Uh, Andy. Um, if you look in your packet, according to our bylaws, we have to designate two people um to the Boulder Library Foundation. Andy's currently on the foundation and I guess my hope or his hope is, our our hope is that we would just continue to appoint Andy to the Library Foundation this year and uh, to continue his role. And then next year, if you know, people wanna swap out or be on the thing, we can keep doing that. How, does anybody have any objections? If we don't have any objections to that, we'll just um move on. I did invite one meeting, the the Library Foundation to come uh, have dinner with us. Figure out a date, maybe it might be sometime in the next four to six months, so um but uh, the foundation is the chair of what?
I know.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Should we just make a motion that Andy fills the other person?
Yeah, we can, we can do that. Uh, I'll make a motion to add Andy as the uh, second representative to the Library Foundation.
I'll second it.
Yeah, all in favor? And all opposed? Okay, thanks. Ask for discussion, but okay. All right, well, that's done. Um, Gun Barrel lease, uh, Mr.
Oh, it is a, it is a exceedingly um exciting that we arrived at this point. So we're asking you to um, take a look at the lease and recommend whether we move forward with it. So there's a lot of background data in the memo. Um, it's not really the half of it, but um, you know, this community has been, I think, probably one of the more vocal communities the ten years that I've been here, the wanting a library. Uh, curiously enough, they actually Gun Barrel had a library from, I think it was sixty eight to sixty nine. It was a grant funded program that the city of Boulder opened up a small location there, a library in Iran for two years and then closed down when the grant expired. Um, so they've been waiting a long time to get one back. There have been various times along the way where there were promises of of a library opening up in exchange for certain actions and this kind of thing, none of which ever happened. Um, I know as a department of the city, I know I went out at least four times to uh, find locations because the city was gonna do it the next year depending upon something or other now. So it's super exciting that now in our, whatever, our fourth month, our fifth month, um that we're in the process right now of getting ready to announce that uh, we will open a location. Um we looked at a bunch of properties, the May thirtieth, I mean, January thirtieth memo is here as well. Uh, the Facilities Committee, um which was previously made up of Doug and Johnny. We had looked at a number of different properties. I had been out to look at a bunch of different properties, both to purchase and to um to lease, just really looking for the right location. Um, we gathered a lot of information with the community in the twenty eighteen master plan. Um, they were very clear where they wanted the library in the town center. Uh, that was the information we brought back to you in January, sort of. We we had in the process of a city negotiation, agreed to uh opening a library in a development that was slated to happen. It's on the Celestial Seasonings property. We never signed. But I did maintain uh contact with the uh developer and I informed him several months ago that we were no longer interested in the space uh, and that we were pursuing other options. And so uh, we're all set. Um, I think one of the big questions that came up uh, that at least one of the big questions that I can heard from the board was can we afford it? And um, yes, we can afford it. Uh, we can afford it in perpetuity. Um, I do think it would still be in our best interest to own the building uh, rather than the leased building. Uh, they resisted multiple overtures from us to ask to buy it or have the first dramatic refusal or all these different things. Uh, it it's because it's in a will. It's in a trust. The building is in trust. The trust is the landlord. We will be renting it from the trust. Um, and I think it's a five year lease. Uh, it's good price. Uh, twelve ninety square foot is oh, right around average, a little below average for commercial uh, space in Gun Barrel. It's fully thirty percent lower, twenty five percent lower than what it was in twenty nineteen. Um, so that's good um, for us. Um, I don't know. Do you guys have any questions? Regarding the Gun Barrel.
The opening, you project like a year from now?
I'd say ten to twelve months is what, I mean, just being reasonable. I I mean, we had talked about at various times when it seemed like a mad scramble and we might have to do something, is could we do it in six? Um uh, I don't know if that's possible. We we could set a push goal, but I think ten to twelve months.
Reasonable timeframe.
That'd put us on on slate to really kind of open in June of twenty twenty five. I I it could be May, uh, it could be April. Uh, maybe it's a lot easier than getting it all done, but I, but right now we are, you know, for another eight weeks, we're full bore, all hands on Novo. And so that kind of kills two months. So that's the ten to twelve. I think we can do it. Once we get started in August, I I don't think the modifications of the building will be significant. I don't think, although we haven't actually had an examination of the HVAC unit. I don't think there's gonna be major work. Uh, the IT, we're pretty confident in, the electrical we're confident in. Um so no, I I think it will be a manageable project, ten months.
Yeah.
Has the building been in use at all recently or?
It closed in twenty twenty one. The bank closed in twenty twenty one. It's been vacant. Uh it was vacant with no sign for a long time. And then they didn't post a sign uh, just to, you know, oh, about a little over a year ago. They've not, they've had interest in uh, people to rent it, but they've turned them down. So we are the first uh, interested party that they've like when they signed the lease already. So they they that, it fits what they want for the space. They didn't want McDonald's. They didn't want to use car dealership. There are nobody looking for office space. Um the big parking lot. It's an ideal location. Um I thought that was.
Yeah, so I appreciated your memo and your, and the information. I just think there would be some public interest in this, right? Like for those of you who live in that area there, I just think there should be some excitement and some interest in in all of this.
Super exciting.
Yeah.
I'm just waiting to make the motion.
So I think I would like to just.
Press releases in draft form now. I mean I I just answered a question a little while ago. Is Gun Barrel the lead or is Novo the lead? So Novo will be the lead, but we'll, we'll definitely mention that um.
So I'd like to make a suggestion about that. I don't know if you wanna wait till Maria goes over her plan. When I, what I think is so important about Gun Barrel is the public in general has no faith that people follow through on their processes. And a Gun Barrel branch was a big part of the promise of the district. I think it's worth, whether it's the board or the board or you, but that there's a, like an opinion piece written about this. Who talks about living up to the mandate within a year. May not be physically occupied until near and then in the community space, we can think about, do you want to invite the community in before you start renovating?
Yeah.
And like have something there that people feel and see it and you get input. Oh, we think this room would be great for this, whatever. But that that follow through, I think, is fairly important.
Well, I mean, I I I feel like the, I feel like if the press release were a video, it would just be like a mic drop and, you know, uh, kind of silence. But no, we will, it takes a few months, but we will get a the branch manager hired. Uh, we may hire one of the librarians this year. Uh, they will be in the space. We will have community meetings. We'll probably have community meetings there. I I mean, my recommendation for your we have the retreat there. Uh, and then we'll have a branch manager to be able to work in the community with the community for probably six months before, you know, a lot of it, it's one big room. Uh, and so it's not the flexibility and it's just slightly under ten thousand square feet. So it's not like redesigning this, but I think it'll be interesting to make, build the relationships. Ask people what it is they want to see from the library. Um, it'll be fun. That'll be great.
Well, I think, so I did do the, we're online, um, in terms of the space itself. And I know you said we're not planning any significant internal renovations. Is there any option for a single gender restroom? Or I looked like they just had two old fashioned restrooms with no family restroom or no single gender restroom or nothing of that variety?
Yeah, I don't know. It's possible. I'm sure it's. Uh, the building was renovated in twenty fifteen. Um I've been in the bathrooms. I don't think the video goes in the bathrooms.
It's not, but they're still updated.
It's good plumbing. We could probably figure out a way to fit a door and create a family bathroom off the hallway. I don't know. That's, that would be a, that's a, that's a, you know.
Whatever. That's mainly reasons I know we went to a lot of work in this building to accommodate that. So it would be nice to be able to accommodate it in future properties we're taking on.
Yeah, Novo, they're only all gender bathrooms and a family bathroom. Um, yeah, and so that would be something we could look at for the Gun Barrel location.
Okay, so the motion would be to authorize me to uh, execute the lease. Um, and I think it's in final form, so and I'm gonna sign it after this meeting or maybe, um, so um.
I moved, we moved forward with the signing of the Gun Barrel lease.
Second that, so um, all in faith, or any discussion? All right, okay. Uh, all in favor of executing lease? Yeah. Nice, nice. Yay.
This is a pretty big deal.
Right, I, I probably talked to a thousand people outside the King Super uh, in Gun Barrel. And everybody's like, so excited, so trying to talk David into throwing something up there to advertise it, but see.
Like maybe like coming soon or.
Coming soon.
Or.
Okay, so also what's kind of cool is across the street is Friends School is moving into the building across the street. Oh, not Friends. Am I right? No, it's uh, cause she's on the library.
Waldorf, is it?
It's a watershed.
watershed.
Sorry. So the watershed school is moving from over on Belmont or whatever it is. No, it's a Balsam
Mm-hmm.
over to uh, Gun Barrel. Into there's two buildings over there that they're moving into. So it's cool. We have a school across the street. Cause I think it's easy, awesome.
Gun Barrel's the new Brooklyn, baby.
That's right. I'm just gonna shave this into a mustache. I'll wear a funky hat. So I'm excited about that. Um, so the director contract, so we're gonna move on.
So to Tom's flank, can I just?
Yeah, sorry.
It feels really fucking good to fulfill our promises and to do it within a short period of time. It's like, it's, it's not like how most things work.
Just like something written about that that stands apart from a press release.
Yeah, I think uh.
Just, it's like, maybe it's Doug. I just put my name on 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 a contract for the next two years, honest commitment of this district.
Yeah.
I thought we could move this fast, Dave. Um, you know, this is a community that's been crying for this for decades. This is what the new district means.
That's nice. It's nice. I like that.
Yeah, I think.
It's like, you know, you.
I can write something up like that. And I'll, I'll work with you, Maria, I know. Um, I think that's part of it. And then I think what I heard was two, two parts of what you or Benita was saying is, one is the engagement piece and one is the sort of advertising piece or the the trademark. And so, um I think I can work with Maria and we're going to come up here and I could put something like that together. And because I'm really excited about it.
I mean, it's just like it doesn't happen.
Yeah, no, it doesn't.
And then what it does, you know, the infrastructure stuff takes so many years. People don't see the progress.
Right.
Like literally to your point, standing in front of Kings.
Yeah.
Everybody's excited.
It would have been faster.
You're invited in and we're telling everybody else that this is Gun Barrel. This is what we do.
Yeah, it would have been faster if they didn't take seven months to appoint us or whatever.
And not to say anything, but it took a little while to work out the lease as well.
Yeah, I did. Thank you.
Return their phone calls or whatever, right?
Yeah, okay.
Paragraph, the lease. That now standard lease language?
Yeah, there's so much in there that in my opinion doesn't need to be there, but in order to get it done, it's there.
All right, the contract. So the contract is in here in almost final form. We, Benita put together some goals, which I thought looked pretty good, looked really good. And I think we're waiting on a job description and you're gonna, I don't know if you've been in touch with, she's out of town this week. And so then we'll add the job description. Is that your understanding to the?
Yeah, and we would add the goals in somewhere, just as a section. I don't know if it's in the maybe in place of like, I don't know, the duties or something like that. Somewhere there.
Go to that.
The goals.
Would you put it as an appendixy thing or?
I mean, somewhere in the goals for the year or something like that.
Okay.
Somewhere, just as a section.
Yeah, maybe like duties.
Maybe there's duties, maybe it's the
Then you maybe you but and between duties and compensation, add a section that says goals.
Goals.
And goals. And there's where the goals in. And then you had to prove those. Those were like, yeah, those goals there.
I think they're great. I think they align with what we talked about as a as a group.
Yeah, and
Okay.
Yeah.
And so you'll you'll bring the you'll send out the job description hopefully.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And then we'll, if you guys have any comments on the song.
Yes.
Go ahead, Sylvia.
Oh, my only concern about the goals, I I I don't know how we measure some of those things in those goals. Like, I'm trying to find what page in the packet is it? Because I had it open and then I closed it.
Fifty-two.
Thank you. That's right. Your comment was related to like the master plan? No, well, I I have a comment on just about every one. So I I wasn't really clear on the first sentence about how we'll measure that. And I don't know what onboarding, like what what are we talking about specifically when we say onboarding? And then on the second one, like, you know, is it realistic to ask him to deliver on ten year master plan goals in one year? I don't know. And then I don't know if we're going to agree on what it means to develop and nurture leadership. So I guess my thing is, I mean, the goals in themselves are great, but they're not measurable as far as I can tell. So I don't know if there's something we can do to tighten that up a little bit so that when the year ends, we have specific things that we're looking at. I'm just trying to make our jobs easier for ourselves. When we're actually trying to like assess whether the goals have been met.
I wonder, for instance, under the master plan, if, you know, we put things like specific things like Nobbo, Gun Barrel, at least begin, you're not going to finish Gun Barrel. Well, you might get it done in this year, but and then anything might be older reads or, you know, put the specific programs that you're implementing this year. Because there's, what are the ones where there's there's several that we're implementing this year?
It's a lot.
I wouldn't put fifty, but put like three or four of the most important, you know, and and then.
Okay. We could put like three or four under each one.
And then develop and nurture like leadership. Like, are there anything we're gonna? Yeah, I get it. Are there? Is there anything that we're going to do to do that? Is it, you know, weekly stat? I, you know, might might think about that. What what as a director, you're planning on doing?
Yeah, a lot of it comes around to the evaluation program that we put in place. And then if we start a leadership program, I mean, part of it's retention rate, right? So we will have, we we measure retention. You wouldn't want to see it suddenly that her turnover ratio go through the roof. That would not, that would be an obvious loss. Like, there's data we can track. We can give you to say like, yeah, it's going well.
You have like what the retention is this year? Like if you said.
It's it's been around eight to ten percent forever.
Oh, that's pretty good, actually.
I don't know what it is right now, but.
I have no idea.
Yes, that would be helpful. I thought I had the same question about the master plan. And I think where I was getting hung up is the language that said deliver on twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-eight master plan goals, because it makes it sound like in June of next year, we're going to be like, where are we at? Like, why aren't we done with the master?
I want you to say.
So I mean, I think maybe make progress toward something a little softer and then maybe with some examples that, you know, are tangible would be good. I also just had a question. The the last category of goals says engagement with community as library district leader, but then the both goals have to do with internal things, like the goals are the board and the leadership within the organization. So I didn't know if that that header was maybe not what we wanted. It says engagement with community as the library district leader. I feel like, like, do we mean like library community? I read that as larger community and then the goals didn't.
Yeah, and that was supposed to be like external facing and so like the board's external facing and and the leadership within the organization, external facing. Maybe that could be clear.
Maybe just library community?
Yeah.
Community. If I read community, it's like, yeah, older community.
Well, if you think of it in terms, so one thing that we have never had to do, and in fact, we're asked not to do, but is a part of what the library is now that we're a district is direct contact to the public. And so we've built out capacity across the board or are building out capacity across the board. Specifically for myself and for public service managers to be able to engage the community, that down to branch manager people like. And we haven't really begun it yet. Gun Barrel will be a great test example. You know, they do some outreach work now. I think their job will be a lot more interesting if they're more heavily engaged in community groups, finding out what's going on. The the template for it really is Kate Kelch, which many of you saw last year with the outreach plan and, you know, engaging community about what they want. And, you know, Kate were she could probably run off forty meetings that we should have staff at in the community. And so it is growing leaders. Is in a sense, putting people in that place where you were kind of at the you were in that forced to be in that listening role in the community about what to do. And so I I think that is part of our intent. I mean, certainly with the branch manager, certainly with the Gun Barrel library manager, that's going to be their job for from the time we hire them to the day the building opens. And certainly Celine is experiencing some of that now with Nobbo. But we need more of it. I it makes sense to me. It's not, it's not off the mark. And I and we'll be more, I mean, we're a leader in library land. And that's great. That's awesome. It's a fun place to be. I think y'all go to conferences and come back and think like feels really good to be here. But we can do more in the community.
Absolutely. I just I thought the header didn't line up with the goals underneath it. So if we could explain how those two are connected, maybe that would help too.
So I think we'll go back and put some, okay, go ahead, Sylvia.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I I guess I'm hoping I can get a little bit of maybe a little bit more background on what the number, the first one. I'm not, I'm not, I I just don't understand what what that would mean or entail.
Which one? The build upon?
Very first one, build upon the existing culture of collaboration with integration of new hires that will increase by fifty percent the number of employees. I I don't, I I don't really understand that one.
Well, I can speak to it. I I'm not, I'm not I'm not going to stand behind the grammar, but I know what it means. You know, we're adding, we're fully adding fifty percent to the workforce. So if the workforce was a hundred before, it's going to be a hundred and fifty. And how do we maintain the enthusiasm to do the work and a culture of collaboration where groups are working together? So for me, that is, that is my biggest job. I mean, that's the biggest job of of the entire leadership team, but it is my primary job in these next year and a half, because it'd be very easy to just like you know, totally fuck it up, right? Like, it'd be so easy to mess it up. And we can't afford to do that. Because the thing that was the thing that has always been great about the older public library is the culture within the organization and the degree to which people are service oriented foremost and that they rely upon others and they're not, you know, we we're pretty honest with each other. And that that has to stick. And, you know, I don't know how we measure it exactly. I think partly in retention rates. You know,
Staff satisfaction.
Staff satisfaction surveys we do. You know, people moving up in the organization, of which there are a ton right now. That's a good sign. So basically, in the first five months, I would say we aced it. The enthusiasm right now is palpable. We all sat through a staff chat today with, I think I don't know. I don't remember. I don't even remember if any of the people presenting today had ever presented before in staff chat. And it was awesome. I was kind of gobsmacked. I was, there was one who I thought should come and do my presentations for you guys. So it's, the things are going really well right now, but it's but it's always, it's a very tentative thing in my mind.
But it is, it is tough. How do we measure that? I think one, this is you know, I think one thing is I'd like to do again, like Sam, you did last year, what was like the listening session? And
Yeah.
Get that onto the schedule at some point.
Yeah, I might add one thing. I do think staff satisfaction, retention, those are good. I would think Sylvia that if the board decides to do a three sixty evaluation next time around, as we discussed, and David wants to model and review a process that he'll implement for the rest of the staff, that 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 first point would be a key part of that. You know, responding to how the director is creating the culture within the rapid growth of the organization. And I think that I get that it's poorly worded, but I think that a a three sixty evaluation might also help get to that. And then all those things, the three sixty, the staff survey, the retention, you kind of have a baseline, right? To then following your, you can that's working very.
Good evening. The library will be closing in fifteen minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
I do think it'd be pretty easy to rewrite this to be measurable, though. Like, you know, grow staff by fifty percent. That's measurable. We can turn into a number of people relative to whatever your baseline count was. You know, conduct a staff satisfaction survey and respond to the top three concerns. I mean, you know, like you can find a way to, we could make this, we could write this to be measurable.
And was the three sixty thing gonna be part of?
No.
No, no, no. But like for next year, um, part of your HR program? Or maybe we just put that into place, have somebody conduct that next year?
No, we we have it on the work plan this year. We're gonna roll performance plan.
Yeah, but the performance.
Or, but it will begin in twenty twenty-five. But I I don't know. I'm not in charge, but I have opinions about what it should be, but it's Libby.
Yeah, well, HR. Probably should say, as part of that, you know, at least for you and and maybe Jennifer's, your director and assistant director, maybe a few top, you know, top staff that we do three sixty.
It may be a three sixty for everybody. I don't think they, I don't know what she's looking at. I mean, I know she's.
They're pretty, they're pretty intensive. So I I don't know.
But there's different ways.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Well, let's maybe we just say as a measurable goal, we'd be putting, you know, the the HR plan, I don't know what you called that, sorry, that into into place. That sound good, Sylvia? Okay. So we'll we'll work on on some measurable things to put in here.
One of our anecdotes just came to mind because we mentioned the listening session. A guy who was at, who I met at that, one of those, he was in the gallery just as I was walking in and I just recognized him. I said, how's it going?
Yeah.
He has a beard. I think his name is Michael. He's a somewhere within the operations staff and he was just, if he's you know, my job is so much better not being part of the city and being with the district. So there's one example of someone who is really, at least in that exchange with me, pressed gratitude for the shift.
That's cool.
We heard that several times today on the tour.
All right. So this will be back in front of you at least one more time, maybe another. We'll see. And then so we're going to move on to the communication plan that we got a good feel, good time to talk about this over thirty minutes and maybe forty minutes. So Maria? You're up.
Would you like to kick it off?
This is Maria Tormos, our marketing communications and engagement manager. She's been with us all of what, five months now? Four months, five months.
Oh, and sorry, Maria. For the new trustees, Tom, and like if there's something you guys are missing, like you don't understand, like the context or re-realize you're you're new and I didn't think when I'm, when we're planning, like, we do have some history of a year or whatever, working together. So I don't want to skip over that if if we need to talk about it and how we got to certain things or where we got to certain places. So please speak up and we can always speak.
Yeah, good point. So the the library had a small marketing budget with the city right around forty thousand dollars a year for the past seven years. It never changed. We didn't have a marketing department. We did not have a communications department. That was all run through the city. And so we had requested funding a couple of times. They basically laughed us out of the room. It was not something the city valued highly. The master plan, if you've read it in detail, prefers to best practice of about three percent of your budget goes towards the marketing and communications element. And so we are starting from ground zero. Maria's the first person we hired. Maria has hired now two staff, one who hasn't begun yet, but there are two of them. We did contract with a independent firm here in Boulder, short term. It's just a, I think, a letter engagements month to month. And we used some of the data that they had, but basically this plan.
The library will be closing in ten minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
This plan was promised to the board in the second quarter of this year. And this presentation is just kind of an overview. And I mean, the overall gist, you'll get it and you certainly ask questions, but you know, we've we've not done much of anything prior to now. And what we did do was a kind of a one size fits all approach, which didn't really fit anyone, although it didn't, it wasn't terrible, but it was okay. And so this is unveiling a new approach, which is Maria, Maria's fingerprints are all over this as well as Craig, one of her assistants and myself, we run it through the leadership team here at the library for feedback and we're hoping to get some of your feedback tonight. But the program is one that begins now, right? Like, so we have a press release going out this week announcing kind of all of the things that are coming with the district, the big ones being Nobbo, Gun Barrel, the Canyon Theater. But it's a lot of things and it's just really the beginning of a whole process. Take it away, Maria.
So like they were saying, you know, before we did, you know, one size fits all. So this is more like the communication plan is like the foundation, how we are going to approach marketing going forward. So we wanted to share, you know, our thoughts with you. So our goal for this So our goal for this new marketing brand is really to increase the engagement and turn around some of the declining trends that we have been seeing. The way we want to do that is really to build and add a good understanding of our customers. And the way that we want to do that is really by developing personas and we will go through them. And the reason to develop personas is really to deliver messages that really resonate with each one of them. So we can address what they want, what they need, what the preferences are. So, you know, for the beginning, these are our, you know, the bands that we are going to be focusing on. You know, we talked about Nobbo, you know, the theater opening, the café, and also the Carnegie Library. The other ones that we are going to also be working on, and we already met with the Maker Space, the Billy sixty-one, and also the Studio Twenty-four managers. And, uh, you know, we are working with them and also the literature festival that is happening in September. We also are working with them as well. So, uh, to inform all the personas and how we are going to approach the marketing, we are, you know, we did some marketing research. And here on the first graph, what we did is we tried to figure out what the demographics here in Boulder and Boulder County. And if you look at Boulder County, that, you know, the gray, um, the darker gray bar, you can see that is very similar to the United States of America, except for the fifteen to the twenty-four, because we have, you know, it's like we are a college town. So we have students that are key on the result, especially for Boulder. But if we look at the Boulder County, and what this is telling us is that we can, you know, use our national data to inform our demographics and information going forward. And if you have any questions, you know, just let me know and you can. So what we did is we look at the media consumption. So if we go and see the TV, you can see the TV is more relevant in our older population, the sixty-five plus. Right? The same with the print publications, you know, uh, our younger, and this is eighteen plus because we are not going to be targeting kids. So, um, so what you can see is only twenty-four, a quarter of them use some type of print publication, but goes, that jumps to fifty-five percent when, you know, in our seniors and older population. With digital is very, very high across. And, uh, you know, with eighty-six percent in total using some type of digital platforms.
And this is all national data?
This is national data. Yes, correct. So, so now if we drill down into our digital, we divide into the news websites and apps, social media and podcasts.
The library will be closing in five minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
So here what we can see and, uh, is that, you know, the thirty to sixty-four news websites and apps is really, you know, is, is higher than, uh, and, and other groups. And we can use this information to really go after and target them, right? Social media, no surprise to anybody, you know, is much higher in our younger population that is in the older. And also podcast attracts more, you know, the younger crowd than, uh, the older crowd. So now, you know, we go even deeper and we go to social media. Now we can see if we want to target each one of the groups, where should we focus our effort? So you can see Facebook, you know, it's, uh, you know, it's high in, uh, you know, all of them, but you know, and we say, oh, sixty-five percent, you know, sixty-five plus is still, you know, it's more than half of the people I am Facebook. We can, we know that Instagram is more like a younger crowd, you know, uh, only fifteen percent of the seniors are in Instagram. So if we have a program for seniors, we will not go on Instagram and try to advertise that for them because we know it's not going to work. Then we'll go to Facebook or we'll go to some print, you know, newspaper that we know that they are there. So what this is going to do is really help us to know where to allocate our advertising money to go after each one of the, the groups that we are going to target.
Your Twitter.
Hey, it's not mine anymore. Good.
I don't know, Maria, is this data available that's more localized or is that just too hard to promote?
It's a little bit hard to combine, but, um, this is why we, we compare our, you know, demographics to the, you know, the United States because that's available. Here in Boulder, it will be harder too.
There is a sit, a survey, I don't know if you saw, that the city did, um, last fall, their communications plan, that they did, did a local survey of what people tracked. I can find that.
Community survey.
I think I looked at it when I came down.
Okay.
Yeah, you can take a look at that. It, it's pretty close to this anyway.
Okay.
YouTube is probably the biggest one.
Yeah.
To be honest with you.
Yeah, YouTube is pretty high and, uh, you know, we can definitely post that.
I mean, things like Nextdoor probably don't show up in the national data because they don't think of it that way, but at the local level.
It's big.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The alphabet or worse and similar, like, you know, there's like a subreddit specifically for Boulder that's active in it. So there's certainly some localized stuff that maybe would occur in here.
Yep, absolutely. So, uh, now we'll talk a little bit about the personas. And I think everybody knows what persona is, but it's a, you know, it's fictional, but it's based on real data, right? What a persona does is puts a name and a face, kind of, you know, the group of people that we want to go. And it makes it easier to understand who are we going after. And they just, uh, you know, it's a group of people that have similar goals, behaviors. And, uh, you know, and then we can really develop a narrative that, uh, appeals to them. This is not a one-to-one marketing whatsoever. This is like, you will see, um, you know, this is really a group of people and there are no privacy laws that are going to be broken. And, you know, nothing like that. We are not Amazon or Google or anything like that. So it's not, I, I know some people were a little bit concerned, but this is not what we are doing. So, uh, we came up with five different personas. The first one is Silver Stages. That is our senior population, sixty-five plus. The foothills family, you know, this is families with, uh, younger kids. The young and the restless is our teens and C U students. The invisible user, this is our women without kids, you women. You know, they are not students. They are maybe in their high, you know, twenties. And also our women that are, their kids are already, you know, older, maybe forties, fifties. And, uh, and then they barely gain by. It's our underserved market where English is a second language. So, uh, what we did now is just we.
Attention, the library is now closed. Thank you for joining us today and we look forward to seeing you again.
So, uh, and the personas are in the packages and I'm not going to go through everything, but I just wanted to, you know, really paint a picture of each one of them. And so our silver stages, they are sixty-five plus. They are empty nesters. They are retired or semi-retired. They really value safety and, uh, we know that we have received many concerns about that. They tend to use, uh, our printers, computers, newspaper. And, um, you know, they, when they learn, they prefer hand-on, on approach. And, uh, they like to do it with people of their own, you know, age. Yeah. So some opportunities offer them classes where they can learn together and make it fun. Some of the programs very popular, they are on aging, healthcare and nutrition and exercise-based activities. And, uh, these group, most of the time feel isolated, especially the ones that don't have family with them. So creating that social connection for them is really important. And we can do that through, uh, book groups or film discussion and also volunteer opportunities and make them feel good, that they are still part of the community. And on the other side, you have some offerings and in the, the media, this is where we use the information that we had before. We know that they are on TV, on Facebook, YouTube, pre-media, and the egg mail could also be a possibility for them. Any questions about? So, you know, this, the next one is the foothills family. So this is young families. They love the library, right? These, uh, these, uh, patrons, uh, they love to come with their kids. They crowd the storytimes, uh, because they can, you know, they like the educational and they, the kids are entertained. They come, they check, you know, fifty books for the kids and then they go, right? They mostly are not involved in any other programs or services that the library offer. So, you know, I think there is a lot of potential to, you know, expand some of the things that, that we are doing. For example, we can do father and son's event or mother and daughter events and they can learn together. The next one. Is the young and the restless. Yeah.
So I have a question. I wondered, have we ever like just sorted like library cards or know like how many cardholders are in each of these age groups?
Well, what we did is, uh, we didn't know before. I mean, we, we have that in the system, but now we just switch to a different software where all that data is going to be available to us. And before we just had, you know, emails in our, you know, in our database. So now we have a place where we can, you, you know, see everything that we have, not only the age, but also if they use Libby and Overdrive, uh, if they book, uh, meeting rooms, we are going to have more data. And yes, we are going to do some analytics with it. And that we are going to use that data to really be able to flag these personas.
But it is, it is a great question, Dana. We, we, the data doesn't overlap. So where we have overlapped the data in the past is, uh, like in the survey we did around the master plan, we had like three thousand responses. And people characterized their own use, what they thought and things like that about the library. They also. So in that, they, we captured quite a lot of demographic data. So I mean, the saturation rate of cardholders in Boulder is very high. Yeah, a lot of households have library cards. I don't know, seventy-five percent, eighty percent of all the households have. So it basically, we are well represented upon every group. But as far as having a card and using it.
Yeah.
The usage rates, if you go back to the twenty eighteen master plan, I don't know if you've come to that group yet, like the, 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 what do we call the, the female?
Uh, it's coming next. Yeah.
So that group is, the females between like twenty-five and fifty-five, not here necessarily with their kids. That is the bulk of the power users from the library. So people who describe themselves as like serious library users, once a month, always checking out books, come to programs, do all these things, like that is almost exclusively that group. This, which you saw in the data, is the largest population in all of Boulder. We have virtually no persons of, so they all have cards. Every single kid who enters into high school, every single kid who goes to.
College, we get a big influx of them. Yeah.
Also, all BVSD students get a lot, they all get a card with their, by being a BVSD student. So they have cards. How do they use it? Like, just anecdotally, uh, they didn't do the survey, but they're not, right? That is not a well-represented constituent group in any surveys that we do, in any, you know, polling we do. They're almost non-existent. And so interesting cannot come.
When you say they don't overlap, what does that mean? You said that the data doesn't overlap.
Our, our card data, we can't, we can't overlap with the demographic.
Oh, okay.
We don't have birthdays. I mean, we, we have a question coming up. I think maybe where we'll be able to identify if you have children in the household. We can do it through GIS mapping. Uh, it's a elaborate process. We do it like once every ten years where we're looking at. We're detailed uses, but it's not the way the card works and something that Tim's looking into with Maria about what kind of data we can get just in the library cards. Do you have better tracking data about usage rates and that kind of thing among the different? But no, we don't have it prior, going back.
And come, um, came up with the opportunities and offerings. Is that about every single one I read is like, yeah, that's awesome. I mean, is that based on things we've offered in the past that have been popular? About this category, but all of them.
Yeah, the opportunities is more about learning about each one of the personas and see what could appeal to them. The offerings is many things we already do. Yes.
And just to clarify, these personas are not designed to encompass, like, it's not like these are buckets that we expect everyone to fall into at least one bucket. These are more just targeted groups that we're specifically interested in for the purposes of this type of analysis.
I think, uh, most of the, our patrons falling in one of these groups.
Plus you're a dude without kids between the ages of twenty and fifty.
Or the men, or the.
They got, they have many students that men visit the library. Women.
So it is a demographic that is not high utilization.
Yeah.
I think libraries spent a little years, I mean, the last library question, talking about it a bit too. And how do we bring male users into the library? And I'm not, I'm not willing to bet farm on that right now. It is nationally, nationally, the data shows it's pretty grim. It's even, it's even more depressing than I think you want to even think about. So it's, um, you know, it is, uh, it is not our primary audience. It's not our, it's not even a, a, a secondary audience. Obviously with us, it's like children, if you got kids under eight or ten, you're likely using the library. And if you are a female, probably under fifty-five, you have a much higher likelihood of using the library. I'd say probably like four to one, maybe five, one of being a user.
Why?
This is an article, and I can share with you guys, but, um, talk about gender, uh, libraries and how libraries, why women start to use the library more than the men, because they, you know, they felt, uh, you know, that they didn't have as many opportunities for education and they, you know, and that has been continued to be that way. And it's really, really interesting. It goes back to, you know, uh, many years ago. And I think that maybe has, you know, um, you know, nobody talks about how important is, you know, the difference in genders in, in libraries and what we do today. So, uh, uh, I thought that was very interesting.
It's a long history. I mean, the, the public library in America grew up at the same time as the suffragists, right? I mean, and they were tech, totally in tandem and they had a lot of the same ideals. So if that meant historically, then for a hundred and fifty years, men decided like, oh, oh, this is scary for us. And then they eventually just dropped off. I don't know, but there was definitely an element of, uh, of it being a rights issue, uh, and actually an equal voice, not only for women, but for everyone. And that's maybe scary. I don't know. So I don't know. I don't, I don't have an easy answer.
Yeah, it was scary.
There's so much goes into this business about libraries, right? So young men in America are the most disconnected demographic from the rest of us. And you see it in politics, you see it in all kinds of cultural things. Americans as a whole don't feel like they belong with them. So there's a really cool organization called Over Zero. Last year came out with the Belong Eboron.
Yeah.
Right? It was shocking to see, like, you know, the lack of feeling like they belong in the workplace, school, in the country. So this is just a symptom of that. Uh, and it's not to say that there isn't reason to think about how do we engage with this? Because they're also the most dangerous part of them, right? You're young and male and disconnected and you find something online that is othering and scary and become a part of that. And if we could bring that person into the library instead, that'd be awesome. But it's a big problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, totally. So this is just, you know, our teams and, uh, you know, our students. And, uh, like David was saying, you know, we would like to bring more of them to their, to the library. They use the space, you know, they will come here, we see some of them scattered around. They just sit down, play video games, they use their wifi on their own devices, but they don't use many of the resources that the library has to offer. So it will be more about how do we engage with them going forward. This is the, um, invisible user. This is the group that, uh, Debbie was just talking about. And this is, uh, uh, women's with kids or without kids or older kids. And they, they use, you know, they like the library. I was reading this, uh, article where they said that they value the library design. And they, they use, you know, they like the library. I was reading this, uh, article where they said that they value the library design. Uh, they, they care about their floor plan, their layout, the materials they are used. And they, that can actually impact how they feel about the library and how long they stay. It's important to them. Uh, they don't like closed spaces. They don't feel as safe. They like to, to see open spaces. Uh, they usually come alone or come with friends and they visit the library often. But, you know, they don't interact with anybody. Like Debbie was saying, they just come and do, you know, get their books. Maybe read, they leave, but don't interact with the staff. Uh, in terms of the opportunities, maybe how we can get them in, you know, maybe speed networking, coding swaps. And this is just, you know, fun ideas, right? Adult, adult breakfast club. Maybe home improvement classes, like you fix it for just for women, you know, we can get them in their, uh, Studio Twenty-four or Building Sixty-one. Uh, maybe learn a new language class. So this is just ideas for them. And we know where they are. We can find them and we can go on Instagram and we can reach to them. We are, um, going to do pay social. Uh, so we are, we are going to go after and be able to engage them and maybe, you know, lure them with some of the new programs that we can do. And also, uh, Benita, what you were saying before about the data, uh, the new software is going to. Because it's going to allow us to know at least the age of the population. We are going to, right now, we have one newsletter. We are going to develop different ones. So when we, we are going to really build that messaging that is going to relate to them. And hopefully, you know, get them in more often. And then this is our last group. This is our under reserve. You know, they tend to be younger, less educated. They use the library less. There are many studies that they said that they, you know, this group use their, don't use the library very often. But the ones they do, they appreciate their, the libraries more than anybody else. Right? And I think for what you were saying before, that, you know, the sense of belonging. They don't feel that they belong to the library. So they don't engage with anybody. They don't feel. It's not they don't feel welcome, but they don't feel that this is their space. So, uh, you know, they are. They just use their, the space for, you know, as a quiet space to read or to study. And they place less value on programs that are tailored to adults. So they will maybe bring the kids, but in terms of themselves, they don't participate in any of the adult programming. So, uh, you know.
Your, your sentence there about that whole sense of trust in it as a government agency and all that, and that's why I realized like, just. You know, my whole thing about our being a library district and how, you know, unique that is and the whole governance thing. Doesn't necessarily translate to, you know, a Latino community and folks who, you know, have no sense of trust of a government entity and all that. Like it, you know, that doesn't really, you know, it's not something of relevance in a sense of, you know. It doesn't make it any safer that it's a library district versus a city.
Yes, see, or see the same way.
It's not, it's not different in that sense. But one of the things I'm also curious about is just. I mean, I know we use Boulder County data, but we are a library district and we have boundaries of our district. How can we better track district, our boundaries and residents of the district? Versus Boulder County residents.
What, when you mean track, tracking?
Or just to know of our population in a sense.
Right. What we can and we will start doing a list of our patrons is we are going to start doing surveys. And questionnaires and we are going to ask them for, you know, and we can include many different things. And that's our, one way that we can, you know, find out more about them. I, I can go back and see if I can dig, uh, more information about the district or, you know, or the Boulder area. But these personas are actually based on us. It's not based on the, you know, United States. It's just really.
Yeah, yeah. No, I know. And I, how we like said two conflicting things about how a district doesn't necessarily translate to a community. But yet I'm like still trying to find our boundaries, right? Like, you know, it's still trying like our service area, you know.
And there's ways to do that. I mean, we, we have to invest resources, like. We're gonna have to buy a mailing list. It's not just about the user database. We're gonna have to buy some software that actually tracks, uh, data. People given where they live, not gonna so many. So there's some investment we're gonna have to bake in building out this program, but this is kind of a start. And the Boulder, well, the city of Boulder, the university population makes this community significantly younger than the, the rest of the population. It, it is, it is remarkably uniform, uh, you know, throughout, I mean, the demographics. There's slight variations in terms of lower income people here, more aged people here. Uh, but it's, it is, I think it's a good place to start. Until we actually can drill down on real data, start doing some mapping, start getting really specific, you know, the demographics from. Twenty eighteen really, it's surprising, but it's, there's very little difference from community to community than the city of Boulder. Areas from Gunbarrel, it's like, you know, slightly various levels of affluence. Some neighborhoods are older than other neighborhoods, but with the exception of Fable Mason, they're all fairly uniform.
Yeah, I think overall, you know, as a group, we are, the differences there are not that big. So I think we are pretty uniform. And I think that's pretty much it, you know, like, um, you know, going forward, you know, uh, really, we are, this is just the foundation. This is how we are going to approach our marketing communication. We are going to leverage the, the personas. And, um, you know, we are going to invest, uh, like Debbie was saying, in other resources. We are also looking to many other ways to advertise. For example, Colorado plugins have this, I think they have. Uh, email lists for like sixty million and they actually, we have a meeting with them tomorrow. They can actually narrow down to people, you know, to zip codes. And we can really, they have, you know, fifteen hundred data points on people. And we can, uh, we try to do like Hispanic or, you know, and we are working with them to see how we can narrow these things. So these are a lot cooler stuff that we can do to really, uh, reach, you know, different, uh, audiences. So. This is just the beginning. So we are very excited.
Any other questions?
No, I just have a bunch of ideas.
We talked about this several months ago, right? Like. You know, the whole, uh, conundrum we are in with regard to the time we are in coming out of the pandemic. The exceeding, the extraordinary growth within the digital virtual mediums and the declining numbers in the physical locations, even though we're adding. So, um, part of the bet we're making is that we can bring everything back on an upward trajectory. And so that bet is partly played out here, is that we are at least projecting that. Not only will our digital numbers stay high, with physical visits, physical circulation, program attendance, all of those things are going to go back up. And what this kind of identifies is like, you know, two power groups, right? So families with kids under the age of ten or twelve or whatever. It's about, it, it represents eighteen percent of Boulder demographic, the city of Boulder. It makes up about forty percent of almost all of our visitor spectrums. So we're winning there. Uh, they, they never left. They'll be closed for two months. When we reopen that for pandemic, they all came back. Uh, the second group there that's our users, uh, is the invisible users, which is the female group. And the younger ones, they did just come, kind of come back. They're here any day. We were walking here today. I don't know if you noticed, but like, the single person in the stack was almost always female and they were almost always between age twenty-five and fifty. Like that is the people who were walking around in fashion every single day. Um, the other three groups, the seniors we had in space, like we had three times the amount of senior users as the seniors. Uh, that's not the case anymore. Our numbers are down since the pandemic and they have not come back. I don't know why. If you know why, give me, I, I think it's a combination of lots of factors. Um, they are not going out in public places in the manner we stayed before the pandemic, but this is an attempt to kind of draw their attention again. Um, teens, that program here has been under teens and early college students have been under-resourced from the beginning. It is an anomaly. If you go into any other library in the country or in the state of Colorado, you will see a huge teen population at various times. We do not. I don't have an explanation. I, I don't know if it's because we haven't resourced it well enough. We have not. I guarantee you we have not. Or if their lives are just too overly programmed. I don't know. But we're gonna try something to try to bring them back. And then the last group that we had mentioned there was the underserved. Clearly, we've done a very poor job. We knew that in twenty-two thousand seven. We wrote back into the plan in twenty eighteen. That is a major part of our objectives, uh, for this year and the next five or six is growing that outreach program. What is an outreach program? So that's already kind of identified. It's not a huge number. It's not like, we're not gonna bring in two hundred thousand users that way. It's basically sixteen hundred households and it's a matter of measuring the impact. But they're still not here, right? They're, sixteen hundred households are here in lower numbers. And when we surveyed that in the past and what national surveys bear out, is there expectations what the public library can be is higher than any other demographic in the United States. Um, by statistically significant margins. And yet, when you asked, when we asked them how we were doing and what the national surveys asked how public libraries are doing, we rate lower at how we're doing. Sitting by statistically significant margin against every other demographic. Uh, and so there's a gap. And we are committed to kind of figuring it out. And I think we're, the plan is addressing it through relationships and building strong relationships with some communities. It's not that many people in Boulder and it's a critical part of what we do. So it's Boulder raids, reading buddies. Um, whether you're seeing an outreach program, so we, we got there still before, we'll be. That's kind of the gist of it. So two markets that we need to maintain, I think we can grow. And one, we kind of have to recapture, and I'm not sure if it's possible, but try to, and the other two that we've never really ever tapped.
I noticed a lot of those programs are like in the middle of the day. I mean, like, you know, that are still happening. You know, like in the afternoon, I thought like, who shows up? Who can be in these programs? You know, some of the conversation stuff, like, like people are working, like. I mean, other people are working, I guess, not the retirees or the.
Talking about more of the other demographics, yeah.
Um, yeah, yeah. Maybe. I don't know.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Oh, I'd say if you have, you want to engage with David or Maria after, then you're welcome to.
For us, like.
For us, yes.
Come see us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because I think he'd probably give some good input. And, you know, um, thank you for this. I'm excited. You know, one of the things I do is just, like, go, you know, go onto the calendar. Cause it's really like how we have only advertised stuff. It's just if you have to go look at the calendar. And so like, I was like, oh shoot, there's a program for a food lab was here, like on Cinco de Mayo, making salsa. Food lab, like you go pay like thirty bucks or forty bucks for your kid to go there, you know? So I was like, man, I missed that one, but, and there was a couple other things. So I'm excited to like. Have those pushed to me so that I can see. Sylvia, you have any comments?
No, thank you though. That was a great presentation. Um, it was, it was nice to see that breakdown.
If you want me to, I could go and look for that folder or David, you said you had a copy of it.
No, I looked at it when it came out, but if you can find it.
Yeah, well, it's got to be in the city.
I know. The city of Boulder where they did the different newspaper engagement thing. If you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause we.
If you want last fall, yeah. All right, I'll follow up with you, Regina.
Yeah.
Thanks, Maria.
Yeah.
You don't have to stick around if you don't want to, because probably another forty, thirty minutes, maybe. Um, the, uh, annual report, uh, I, we put this in here as a draft. And probably, do you want to talk about it or?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, it's, we're new, right? So you guys are new. Uh, this is the first time we're doing it where we're not, um, the city of Boulder. But we did, I mean, just for this, we replicated identically, pretty much exactly what we have done. As department from the city of Boulder for the past, you know, ten years. And so that's kind of what we did this time. Um, our plan is to totally change it next year when we have a full year of the district. Um, but it is what it is. I mean, it highlights the number of different data. We highlight some firm. But, you know, when I look at it for what, when I, when I realized like, oh, we're showing it to the board of trustees. Really, the only page that's kind of relevant is page eighty-three. It's the budget that you approved. Um, and you know, if you're interested in all the other things, great, but, and there's a title on that page, but we already fixed that. But, um, I can be. What's that? Yeah, yeah, so, uh.
Trick thing for you.
I read it six times and I forgot it until I actually sent it out and then I immediately saw it. Um, but, you know, I think next year we would welcome input on how we could do it. I think, the, I think the plan is to make it look more like a standard, um. You know, annual report. It's not gonna be like, you know, it's not gonna be, you know. Jamie Dimon and, you know, their annual report, but we'll do more of a tracking of expenditures and how programs went. What things went into, what new things happening. And so I think it'll look quite, quite a bit different next year. Although we did do one, one year, which got the best feedback and probably more public comment. It literally was ten slides. There were photographs of a single sentence on each one. That one was the one that we probably got the most feedback on. My dream is to have, to write a song and perform the annual report in under two minutes. Accompanied by a banjo, but I don't know if we're ever gonna get there, but that's a dream before I retire. But I, and we're open to ideas, beginning from what we are thinking of. And we're welcome to feedback this time. I mean, it's due in July. I don't want to change this dramatically, but I'm certainly willing to take input.
Can I ask a dumb question?
Yeah.
You said it's due in July. What, what is driving, like this is required by law?
Required by law if we turn it into the governing and that, the governing and county, we have to turn it into them by July thirty-first.
Because of the IGA or?
No, because of the.
That's the state laws.
Oh, okay, okay.
So you will see this.
It is referenced. Yeah, okay. That's what I was maybe remembering, yeah.
You will see this, uh, a couple more times, put it in here. Um, any big feedback you want to give tonight, we'll probably, at least you'll see it once or maybe twice more. Before July thirtieth, so.
Probably once. We'll bring it back again for final approval, but.
Yeah.
It's not like, I mean, it, it does, I think, probably with your, your approval. I, we've never had to do that in the past with the commission. So it wasn't top of mind when we put it together, we just basically, you know, we, uh. Truth be told, we've also never really had somebody whose responsibility it was. And so actually, yeah, I got it this year because she was brand new. So, um, but yeah, so it's like, it's a lot of people, a lot of people reporting a lot of data. You guys have cheated today. You bet cheated today in the bathroom here. She's the one that's doing it.
Is the, I'm sorry, go on.
One of the things, I didn't see it. Maybe I just missed it, but I would reference the IGA. And just reference that as like sort of the major piece of, uh, work as a part of this and this transition, right? And, um, the other thing I wondered about was just referencing the foundation. As an element in the scheme of things here. And then somewhat related, I've never understood why the Jipor Literature Festival. Is like the one thing that is like sort of here with us. And why it is and not like other things, but. You know, and why it is like uniquely placed and positioned. When, when I remember. Executive Director coming here, like she reached out to me and I said, well, come to our trustee meeting. And then Johnny shoot her away because she said like, you shouldn't be here. You should be like, you don't belong here at this meeting. I was like, well, I don't know why you're not. Anyway, so, but then why is the Jipor Festival been referenced here in our report? So I don't get it.
Very good catch and a great question. You know, the, the reason is, is because it was a city priority. I mean, it's become at this point, this is our tenth year. It's become a part of the library brand. I don't think anybody understands that it's not really us that does that. I mean, we are a major player, but not a lead partner on Jipor. And so you're absolutely right. But it was a high priority for the city. Uh, and so that's probably why it started and now it exists. But why it should have a feature role in the annual report? Yeah, you're absolutely.
Yeah, I don't.
Okay.
I don't think we or the foundation gives, do we give, we, we have staff time and support, but.
But no, in, it's, it shouldn't be positioned in any other way than any other thing. And, you know, I mean, now they have SCFD funding and I just remember like she had reached out to me and I said, well, come to our trustee. And then I was like, you should, you shouldn't be here and.
Yeah.
The, the law requires an annual report. Does it require that the time span for the report be the calendar year?
It's, I think it just says.
We defer to. And we could say we're going to do it June to June instead of.
I think it says before June thirtieth or something.
Oh, you mean.
The period the report.
Period the report covers.
You could change it.
Okay, I only ask, I would not for this report, but in the future, I think it'd be worth us thinking about one of two things. I mean, it's a good report. Most of it's already out of date, right? Because like we're going, the new library is going to be open. We're, we're still showing the. Architecture renderings. We have an actual building we can take pictures of, right? So I think it'd be useful to either start delivering this report a lot earlier so that it doesn't feel. Suddenly out of date and conflict with other messaging, right? I worry about this report coming out and saying like, we're going to open a new library a week after we already opened the library. Or shift our reporting period. So make it so that this report is like. The last six months, the previous year and the first six months of the new year, and we deliver it a month after that in July. Um, because then we'd be less lag time between the reporting period when we're actually delivering the report.
You just, you'd have to fit it into your.
Uh, it depends how long it takes to prepare it.
No, it takes the most great feedback, too. I, I, we don't get any use out of it.
Why not? Yeah, well, it's, to your point, if, if you're trying to do it as short as possible, like, great. That means we should be able to deliver it even more quickly.
Just the council and the commission this week.
Uh, I used to print fifty copies and I would throw away forty-four and.
Yeah.
This year, uh, they asked me, you want to print any? And I think we printed ten. So I thought we would give them to you eventually, but that, that we are, we're not printing. Nobody reads it online. I, I don't repost it. Um. And we should probably think of a way that it benefits us, I mean, to do it. Because really the data, the data delay is what delays the time. And then it's really having anybody resource to do it. And so until this year, when Maria and Maria shouldn't have had to take, but it was like. Nobody else was here to do it either. And, uh, and then previous years, it was really falling to. Pretty much the newest kid on the block and they have to throw something together.
And I think like David mentioned, you know, we, we made the decision to just keep it the same. Um, because this was the last year that we were with the city. So that was, you know, twenty twenty-three, right? So ne- next year, when we report in twenty twenty-four, we can, you know. We would like to do a completely overhaul. Yeah.
I think the state law only requires that we show what you approved in the budget and what we spent. In the budget and then say like three things we did. So we really could do it on a page. I mean, many, there are libraries that do it on a single page. Um, and so we could do that. And we have done with it. It's a, it's a matter of governance and we have to do it. And we do a single page document, we turn it into each of them and. We're done, but it's also easy for you to imagine where it can become a, an effective communication tool. And in that sense, you know, we can use it to both. Aggravate and also.
Yep, yep.
Communicate.
And I think we've seen just aside on what it, we want it to be, because those are two very different things. Um, but yeah, I mean, if we can, if it's the bare minimum thing, I would say we could at least reduce the lag. If it's part of the communications plan, then like, yeah, let's align it with the rest of the communications plan.
I give it to the bare minimum for the, the elect that's. Do a really short one and focus on something like this that is calendar year, because that's what the public understands. Anybody that supports the two minute banjo song?
Yeah, well, they're done.
Very pro two minute banjo. For the record.
I don't know. The TikTok really like.
Well, yeah. Okay, there is a.
The I G A is in there, too.
It isn't it?
Yeah, there, there's a reference to the, um, I, I forget what it's on, but there is a reference to the I G A.
Okay.
So whoever, David, you assign it to. Guess.
That'll be Maria.
And then, like, when's a good time for your schedule and, and for next year and, and like how you want to present it? Um, I mean, if you guys say you want to do just the short thing, that's fine. I do personally think the data in there. Um, from a. From my own perspective of, if I need to grab different highlights, it's a good thing to go back and grab those. I know I could come ask you, right? But like, uh, you know, from, I know during the campaign and during the other things, we, we did pull from. From that data. So not that we need it for that, but I'm just saying like, it's good to see what we did in a year. You know, it's kind of like, this is what we brought to you. That's how I saw it as something, though, but, but.
There's probably a whole nother data, or a whole nother discussion of on the data here at some point, too, because at least in my head, like. Ideally, we don't have to wait for an annual report to see the data, like. We could have a website that just shows the real, I mean, yeah, there's some reporting delay, but if you're reporting financial reports monthly anyway, like. We could do some data transparency stuff here where that's just more readily available.
Yeah, like how many books have been checked out on digital.
I guess a whole nother conversation, but I know this study did a lot of open data stuff. There's probably an equivalent we could be thinking about that as well. And if we do that well. A point in time report becomes less relevant.
Right, that's cool. Okay, so.
And some of the data we have to report to the state. So each year we have to report to that, that, most of this is drawn from the data that we report to the state. And I think some of their good. So it's important to me to run my job, like I, those numbers that you see on eighty and eighty-one. That's a lot of, you know, we track those numbers all the time. And like, then we report them manually, but they're important milestones. And if you are into memorizing data and watching, uh, trends. That's a good use of them.
Um, so we'll move on from the.
Yeah.
And, um, and then we'll probably have, you know. You guys decide what you want to do, come back to us in the fall, you know, later fall. So I'll put that in the.
Just.
November.
Go ahead. Now, you pointed out page eight. We really had seven hundred and ten unique volunteers.
Yeah, and that number, I mean, that number is up, I mean, from down from where we went. It is, as I always say, it is about ten. The work that of running the library is volunteers. That number has been as high as four people. So it's a big part of what we do. And now it's like, cool, we have mentioned it, like. The library is run by volunteers. That's, that's pretty cool.
Okay, so, sorry, Tom, do you have any more questions? Okay, uh, trying to keep us on. We're, we're a little bit ahead, but we're doing okay. Uh, we have two policies that people tend to sometimes. Board, please. Um, the first one is the meeting and study room policy. Ken, is that you or?
So I want to give a little background to the, uh, folks before we dig into these two policies. So in January, the Board of Trustees approved kind of wholesale the library's public facing. And we have a, a schedule that is available on the team's site for the board of. How we'll be reviewing the policies, um, both the current policies and the new ones. Uh, staff prioritize those policies according to those that we must have. Uh, by law, by, from our auditors, uh, recommendations, that sort of thing. And. Um, the public facing policies, we also prioritize in terms of. How out of date they were or if we're bringing on a new service. And so, um. You will see probably a policy or maybe more than one each meeting for probably throughout the summer. Um, and then we'll have worked our way through everything that we have currently and a couple of new ones will be coming down the pike as well. Um, typically, uh, I will bring the policies if it's a new one, uh. To the board for their consideration. The commission used to do, uh, initial review at one meeting and then. Give feedback. Staff would incorporate that feedback and then, uh, the next meeting they would approve it. If it was in good shape and usually they did. You, you all could approve with minor changes, any policy at any time, like you could do this tonight if you wanted to. We invite, um, often invite the person that kind of over, their group oversees the, the function for the policy. And that's why. Um, Tim is here tonight. He, he's sort of sponsoring these two policies. He worked with a colleague, Jamie Kopke, the Programs and Events Manager, to. Make some recommended changes that were reviewed by leadership team and now. Um, he can give you a little more background about those changes.
Yeah. Sure, I'm Tim McCallan, the Public Services Department Manager. And I oversee operations here, customer service operations at the main library, and then I supervise the branch managers as well. So on, uh, page eighty-six is where the first policy is, which is the meeting room and study room policy. And you have, there's kind of a, this is the original version on page eighty-six, the red. Red marks would be edited on page eighty-nine, doing a sneak exactly what we changed. You'll notice we didn't make a whole lot of formal changes. A lot of it was. Just updating the wording from referring to us as Boulder City Library, referring to the city, uh, as an entity to referring to the district. As the main entity, so that's a lot of the changes. Uh, kind of the two main substantive changes. Were around increasing the monthly limit from eight hours per group to sixteen hours per group. And we kind of have three, uh, reasons for suggesting that. Number one is it aligns with the kid in theater use policy. Uh, which gives folks the opportunity to use that, uh, stay up to sixteen hours a month. Rather than we can be confusing, it'd be easier just to apply that across the board to all of our spaces. You can use sixteen hours in theater, sixteen hours in the meeting rooms. Uh, but currently that limit is eight hours. That's something that staff. Kind of have to loosely enforce, which is not necessarily a great use of staff time. We often have people call in and say like, I have two extra hours. Staff almost always say yes for that. So why not remove that barrier and to give people what they're asking for. And then thirdly. Hopefully that helps us, uh, kind of boost occupancy rates. So just another way to kind of remove, uh, barriers to use in that way. The second change. Um, is listed kind of the second bullet point on the meeting rooms there. We're definitely change the reservation period from twenty-four weeks in things down to sixteen weeks in events. And a lot of that is to give our programming staff more time. Twenty-four weeks, about six months, uh, ahead of the. At a time, so a lot of program staff don't know exactly, uh, what, what day or what time, uh, the program's going to be, that we. To confirm those details with program vendors and that sort of thing. So we run into some issues where. By the time those details are confirmed, staff go to check and someone in the public has already reserved the, the bulging proof. Is the main room that we use for programming, but that's also the most popular for the public to reserve as well. So we run into some conflicts there. Uh, sixteen weeks, it like still gives people an opportunity to make those reservations. We also dug in and saw that a lot of those kind of advanced reservations are ones that end up being no shows anyway, because they made them five months in advance. So, uh, just as a way to kind of, uh, take a few barriers off of staff, uh, to be able to plan programs, uh, in that way. So those are the two major changes that we made. We added in no mouth, because of course they're going to have meeting rooms and study rooms, which is great. Um, and then I updated the terms, terms of use. Um, you'll see a lot of red letter changes there. Those are mostly, uh, not substantive changes, really just to match kind of the wording that you all improved in the theater use false. So clean up that for yourselves. If you have those things around the library to promote your, your, uh. Programs, you can't charge people, um, tickets, uh, to be in there, all those sorts of things.
When groups like Jipor use the library, they're doing so under some terms suffered from this policy, I assume, since they're selling tickets?
Uh, they're not, they don't sell, they do sell tickets outside of the script, the same, but they're selling, uh, not tickets, they're selling, um.
Or when the foundation holds their gala and sells tickets, it would not be under the terms of this policy?
Yes, the foundation is exempted from that as a sponsoring agency, partner agency. Moving away from the sponsoring should talk, so create some situations for, um. Jai Por, but it is that we, um, have often wanted to make, uh, asks and transact cash in the library, which we don't allow. We don't allow that for the foundation. Don't allow that for anybody. So that's, um, but they do sell, what do they sell? It's like. V I P, uh.
Get a bag or something. Okay. I have a question on this, uh. Since here under meeting and study room guidelines. After it says the meeting and study rooms are provided during library operating hours and are available for reservation. This is where I get confusing. And by use of patrons after library programs, I just didn't understand. What this like after library programs, events or meetings or libraries.
First priorities for the library staff, library programs.
Okay, okay, so.
Programs, events, meetings, or.
Are scheduled. Okay, okay. Um, maybe just clarify that a little just. It's a little.
It's a long sentence.
I just didn't.
Long, long sentence.
I didn't know if like it was like after the program, they can book a room, I.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the intent is that the library has preference, maybe something like that, because otherwise it sounds like it's after in time.
Yeah.
Like, so you can reserve it late at night after the program.
That's, that's what I thought, like, oh, we can reserve it at eight P M and.
Do you think it's necessary that we mention that the library has preference?
You wouldn't go in and cancel someone's.
We have.
Oh, you have.
Well, we try to move them before we cancel them, but yes.
I would say, so then you probably should say, um, subject to.
Okay.
Um. We're just a library program, so, yeah, priority.
Yeah.
Sorry, I shouldn't say subject to, but. Maybe you say that. Um, any other comments on?
The two hour study room limit? We feel that's necessary or could that be extended as well? Like, are we already at capacity with all the study rooms?
Yeah, I said you're in some bullets. We've been close.
Never mind then.
I'm looking into adding some more.
Yeah, I mean, if we got to a point where we had felt like we had the capacity, I would don't raise that. We're at today, that's where we're at today.
It's two hours per day.
Go ahead.
Yes.
I mean, they can't just use this as my WeWork and go post up here for eight hours more called.
Some of the people that are.
On eight hours of video calls. Can't work in the cafe.
Are you all okay with the changes that we've made? Can we accept those and then make that tweak to the sentence and bring this back to you next meeting or?
Do you have to bring it back?
Do you want to just approve it with that change and?
I move approval with the change we discussed.
I think there's some extra spaces you should copy edit out, but it's unsubstantive, so.
I would second that. And Sylvia, do you guys have any, you want to see this again? I'm all for clearing out further things on the schedule, so. I'll say got any discussion?
Doug, um, there, there were some changes in the laws last year that create liability for a library district. For, um, sexual abuse of children and things in programs that you don't have anything to do with. Because you're considered a sponsor of them. Um, so what I'd like to do is put together, I've got some memos on that topic, because you might want to include some things in here like, um. You know, that they, the promoters have to. And that's not a library sponsored event, um, that kind of thing.
It says that.
That this event is not sponsored through those doors.
Your posters have to include that language.
Okay, good. I didn't notice that. Yeah.
I think we definitely did that with the.
Is there more that's required?
You know, I, I don't remember. There was, we've been advising quite a few things like waivers and other things that specifically. Um, reference this new law. Because it's quite a change.
Maybe we approve it and. I mean.
Subject to any addition.
Yeah, and then, and then they have to bring it back with those additional law changes. How, what's your time?
I'll bring it next month. I'll put it in the, in the attorney report.
Okay. Um, what do you feel like you want?
No, we could, you could approve it now and then, whatever. If you approve of what Kim presents to you next month, then we'll just plug it in.
Okay.
Date it.
All right, so there's a motion and a second, so, um, all in favor of approving it. Uh, hi.
Hi.
Close.
I, I, I didn't think we covered that. And actually, we're moving sponsorship altogether from our. Okay, the language, well, that's in the next policy that you guys are. Not sponsoring any organizations. Yeah.
Yep, the fact that language is in there suggests it's already been done, because that's not normal language, having something on a poster. But we'll pull that out anyway.
Insurance companies want to spot it, too.
I bet. I bet they did.
Right.
All right, so policy number two, as David alluded to, we still call it sponsored groups coffee. Uh, and that was really in place. Um, for folks who wanted to use the theater when we were kind of like a pay based model, um, so that's we came up with that, um. Also, it also applies to meeting rooms for what we call recurring programs and events now. So think of like book groups that we hear discussion groups. Our citizenship classes that meet every Monday day. Those are not put on by library staff. But they are hosted, uh, in our spaces and they show up on our library calendar briefcase. Uh, so that's kind of what we're talking about here. So we are, uh, as David mentioned, uh, proposing that we move away from sponsorship. So we are, uh as David mentioned, uh proposing that we move away from sponsorship to using the word recurring programs. Uh because we feel like that's more accurate, accurate representation of what's actually happened from these groups. So uh you have the clean out version on page ninety two. The master version, I'm pretty bad on this because um a lot of this was duplicated in the theater use policy, so we just got rid of it. So moving away from a model to reserve the theater to a free model uh kind of makes a lot of this redundant and we were able to to move all this. So anyone wanting to preserve the theater uh on any sort of recurring basis would go through the theater use policy. So this just applies to the meeting rooms. So we start many references to the Canyon Theater here. We again start all the references to Baltimore Public Library and shift that to district as the entity. And then we got rid of the word sponsorship, which was throughout, so and changed that to recurring um program. So uh that's why we thought about it, so there's not really many substantial changes um to what's going happening here. Um Yeah, I think I covered all the major changes that they're proposing in this policy.
Just as a question, so the things that aren't eligible for reoccur, like this list of things aren't eligible for reoccurring programs, could still do a one off program under the regular media policy?
Exactly, yeah.
Um, so these recurring meetings, as I read this, it's like they they have like some support from the library, so it's like not a library event directly, but it says that like it's like, it says that recurring programs are the library hosting of, it's coordinated by an outside entity, but supported or organized by the library.
Yeah, so the library staff make the room bookings for that and do like the recurrence of them and then also make sure they're posted on our calendar events.
Okay, so the the library's involvement is like logistical, not, okay.
Do they still need to put the disclaimers then, that?
Yeah.
That's in here too. And then uh Tom and Andy, there is a a separate policy we have lengthy discussion on quite surprisingly, on the Canyon Theater through a few months ago. Um, so if you're interested, you could pull that up.
Well, I would move approval of this revised and dated policy.
I'll second that though. Andy, you want a second since you?
I second it.
Thank you. Uh, anybody have any this other discussion regarding this policy? Okay, so uh all in favor? It's passive, it's mentioned, all opposed? Okay, no, no one, Karen, no one, no passes. Um Okay.
Wow.
Yeah.
Um, the next part is uh of our packet is um, well, we're going to do a group photo, but Sylvia is not here, obviously um in person, so can we, will you be here the twenty eighth? In person? Maybe?
Hopefully.
So I think I just see if everyone will be here the twenty eighth, then we hopefully can get a a group photo. Otherwise, we'll have to stand by your picture on the T V and that will look strange.
No, we just have to get that, those, get that back.
Yeah. And uh take a picture there, hopefully, so everybody be healthy and and show up.
Well dressed.
And well.
Again.
Um, so we'll we'll push that um there's a nice write up, I don't know.
That was a great article, yeah.
Yeah, right up in our on the make it space, I know. That's the data and then staff, um director updates?
Um, not not much, um thank you for approving the policies. It is, you'll find, I said here, thank you, it's like uh we do a lot of programs, so program attendance, we have always been like the top library in the state per capita attendance. Like, so we blow it out of the park in programming, but it is complicated kind of thing. And so sponsorships initially had to go through me. Uh I pushed that off on the programs and events a number of years ago and now I think getting away, it's just it's fraught with the potential for bias and just not in place for us to be, so we're moving away from that. But there are a lot of programs that we do um that are, we pay performers. So Drag Queen Storytime is a perfect example on that there is controversy on, we've talked about this multiple times with the Board of Trustees. You know, the backing that we had all along uh prior was the city's equity policy and the promotion of that and it's also like the intended programs that we do every year. And so there's a reason to keep going out, that's not a sponsorship program, it is, it is part of our objectives. And I mean, we make a part of our uh promotion of equity within the community to pay for performers to do types of programs crossing all kinds of things. Um, you know, the whole line around can you use the rooms? Our meeting rooms are roughly, I mean, the occupancy rate's like over seventy percent uh at all times are open. The meeting rooms are filled like um roughly seventy percent of the time. The study rooms, it's like ninety nine percent of the time. So you know, that's one of those things where it is high demand, it's a service that we provide that no one else does um and huge for the community. But anybody can meet in our rooms, like anybody, uh we, you know, we have so the example I use is like flatterers, right? So um we have a ton of books on flatters, they're on the uh if a bunch of flat authors want to meet at the library and talk about how cool it would be to fly to the edge if there was only a destination or look over, they're welcome to do um we would never sponsor a program or pay for performers to come out and do a library program on uh an expert symposium on life and class. Does that kind of make sense about where our lines are? It's pretty loose, but um the fact that we are free and open quasi-public space, anybody can come in, like political groups can come in, religious groups can come in, um they might have, religious groups may have title that actually occurs to it and you would have to be a tidying member to actually attend. That's not our concern, everybody has access to the rooms. Um, we do not deny anyone access for that. The, you know, the N R A I think does have much. Um, so does the Arab Book Club, right? Like, that's a group that we, is a recurring program, right? So they need here, their book club happens all the time, it has been going on for like twenty five years. Uh we help them book space, we encourage them to be here, that kind of thing. But it is a constantly moving target and they're I'm just, I'm just programmed. Um, it's a lot like the books. We, unless we're paying for the program, we are not standing for the content, putting it on ourselves, paying for it. We do not stand by the content, we are only standing by the process by which all of these programs have a right to be here and or if they are a program that we are co working with to do it, in those cases, they fit our mission. I don't think I have anything else, uh nobody's on target. Um, we wrapped up day, it looks gorgeous, it looks amazing, um it's close. Uh we anticipate getting um you know, possession of the building uh soon after your twenty eighth meeting. So the the date right now is May thirtieth, uh we'll be in there. All of us, we're all going to be shelving books on June fourth, um we'll be hanging art and moving chairs on June first, so we'll, you know, it's all hands on deck. Let's first
Invite us to join you.
Yeah.
You're welcome to come. Yeah.
Shell books.
Yeah. If you're gonna make it worse and make Flora mad, you don't want to be there. Uh, some prior experience regarding, you have to pass a due test. It'll be fun, so the big party's June twenty ninth. Um, we expect we'll open the doors for a soft opening before the twenty ninth. But I, we don't, I mean, we're, we're, we're eyeballing a tentative date, but I don't even want to say what it is because I don't think we'll make it. I will miss that by four days probably, give or take. And then um when we're ready, we'll open the doors and put out a blast on Facebook or something and say, hey, we're open today, come on and see us, but the party's the twenty ninth.
YouTube.
And July first, yeah, July first, July first will be there for
Yeah.
Some V logs. Uh, sorry, I just want to, wait, can you get her on the just onto your computer there, Sylvia?
It's restarting.
Only can do it on this.
Yeah.
So Sylvia, like, call one of us or something, she wants to keep listening.
Um, well, you're done with the, did you have a question? If you, if anybody has a question, sorry, I'm trying to figure out, I'll just get a caller. That's probably fast. Yeah.
This is Sylvia.
Oh, it's going. This is what it gets into this reboot loop.
I I think I know why. So. Oh, sorry.
Don't worry, it'll come back.
Yeah.
It's consistent.
We're also not recording?
I'm recording on this.
Okay, cool.
A backup.
That's why Amy's here, Amy could have gone home after, but she wanted to see
I toy with
All right, Sylvia, you're uh, you're on the speakerphone.
Okay.
While we, we don't have much more, but I didn't want you to to be uh looked at.
Oh.
Oh, is it a new one?
Yeah, we should pass these around, uh we do a card uh design competition every year with kids and adults. So these are the winners and Tim actually has them here, it's really cool. So it's a, the adult thing is a public voting, the kids one we vote for internally, staff to vote for uh the children's stuff uh.
Can you do a quick plug?
Sure, we're on trustee matters.
Yeah, quick plug for next Thursday, the twenty third. Um K G N U is having radio week next week, a lot of different events, but one of them is happening here in the Canyon Theater. Donnie Betts, who is a uh veteran, a writer, producer, actor, uh has been doing a radio theater series for years on K G N U and elsewhere in the community called Destination Freedom, uh dramatizing events in African American history. And he's going to do one live from the Canyon Theater.
That's at six P M?
I believe so, uh it's definitely next Thursday.
Oh, I have an email here. Okay.
Kid appropriate? Uh, I believe it is kid appropriate, but I'll, I'll check that, yeah.
Um, radio week.
Those are very cool, so randomly when you get a new card, you'd get one of these, right?
You get to pick.
I get to pick.
They show you the, it's like getting stamps, they should, I just did.
Really? When you, so
I needed a new library card because mine disappeared, so thank, let me pick.
Yeah, you get to choose what card you want.
That is very cool.
Yeah, so we do it every year, um how many entries?
Five, six.
Uh
Five, six, yeah.
Three hundred something. Actually, it's three hundred entries. And yeah, so it's fun.
Uh, it's five to six thirty is the program here, Canyon Theater, it says.
Thanks. And it's being broadcast over the air, so it's probably not super offensive, right?
No, I'm sorry, it's five P M at the reception. So five thirty is the reception, five is the reception, six thirty is the
Just make it happen.
Okay, next Thursday. Um, any other trustee matters? I welcome our new trustees for your first meeting, it's going pretty well. Um uh anyone else?
It's, it's a less than attrition. So we did a two and a half hour tour of the branches today.
Oh.
From, so they
Can I get a tour of the library? What do you guys?
We shouldn't, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have advertised it.
Yeah, we didn't notice the meeting.
Happy to do them two by two, let me know.
Yeah.
We managed to get it done in two and a half hours, which was remarkable.
Give me some of the basements.
Oh, wow.
More more bookstores than you ever wanted to notice.
Actually, that was my favorite part of the tour of this building, the basement.
Um, I canceled it, but I, but is there any other?
I remember we have the email from Chris, I was just gonna
Oh, I didn't get the email.
Oh, okay, okay.
Can I just, as you mentioned that, I just wanted to like clarify what I said about the annual report when I mentioned the foundation. I I know that you had the foundation page at the end, but what I wanted was was, I was suggesting to you in your write up here was to mention the foundation in the body of this piece here.
I usually do.
Okay, that's, that's what I was just suggesting.
So I think in every year before I have, and this year I devoted that last paragraph to
Just to acknowledge another foundation there that's
Okay, Andy, can you please?
All right, quick foundation update, so um Kristen's apologies, you cannot be here tonight, but the foundation did, the main update is the foundation welcomed four new board members at last week's meeting for the first time, so we do have four new board members. As David mentioned, we'll have a joint meeting at some point, you'll have the opportunity to meet them. Um, happy to send along their names, they'll be on our website shortly. Uh, four women, two of whom run local business, that they kind of started out of the library. Um, one woman who comes as project manager at Google and um one who kind of comes from the uh the private school world um and the nonprofit school world, so. Uh, a good group of folks, I think they'll be solid additions to the board, so we're happy to have them. The other update is the obvious one, Doug's leaving the foundation, Sylvia and I will continue. Uh, we did just complete our audit, which was the first time we'd actually done a full audit and got a clean audit report, so that's good. If folks would like a copy of that audit, we're happy to make it available. You're probably tired of reading audits at this point, but you know, it's an audit of our financial statements. Um, that'll be helpful though, due to some more fundraising going forward, increasingly foundations we work with or funders we ask money for want to see an audit and we didn't have one in the past, now we do. So that'll be helpful. Uh, fifty year gala tables continue to sell, we're currently, we've sold twenty eight of the thirty three tables, we think we can fit upstairs, so we've almost sold out. We haven't even started officially advertising the event yet, so that's a nice place to be. Um, we are working as part of the, that event. The uh foundation is going to be working with David and the library to purchase some stage and A V equipment that would be appropriate for the main upstairs reading room in the main library. The library would own that equipment, we would use it during the gala, but the ideas that would be available for other folks conducting events in that space in the future. There would be lighting gear, A V gear, we basically have a setup to host events in that space going forward. Uh, so the foundation will foot the bill, the library will own the equipment, as we normally do. Uh and they're working, we're working on basically working with David to get a new granting process between the foundation and the library set up. I think there'll be some further discussions on that, but um just trying to help with our whole mechanism by which the library can ask the foundation for money and we will grant that money going forward. Sylvia, did I miss anything?
No, I think you got it all, and I think the thing that's like really exciting is the gala is going to be really, really, um, I think it's going to be really special this year. So hopefully, uh most of everybody will get to go.
I, we we have multiple tables that have been purchased with spare seats, so if anyone wants to go, we'll have a seat.
Uh, next meeting we'll have a uh treasurer report.
Yes.
So, uh and they, you're gonna get they have all the stuff. I don't believe we need to go into an executive session.
Nope.
Uh, I'm sorry, legal counsel updates, anything?
Nothing to add, I was gonna comment though, if on your new library, uh one of the other library districts had an event where they allowed the little kids to come in and they passed out supplies and said, design your own library.
Oh, that's cool.
And it was wonderful. And those, most of the kids didn't have a children's section, they had a no adults allowed section.
That'd be cool.